And would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilman Scott Morgan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, wow, we're in the 1999 era.
That's right.
Welcome to the 1,999th regular meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on, look at that, Monday, September 9th, 2024. Madam Clerk, I just point out, we, our clerk is out on business today, so we have the very capable Mrs. Delmarco to stand in as our deputy city clerk. Will you please take the role?
Sure. Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toye?
Here.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Bezinski?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here.
We show all members of council here. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of City Council that was held on August 7th.
Mr. President?
Councilman Donavick?
I'd like to remove, or I'd like to make a motion to have number 15 added to next week's regular, the next regular meeting for reconsideration of the vote, please.
Support.
Mr. President?
The floor is yours.
Thank you. This was item number 15 from the last meeting. We took a vote on it for proposed lot splits along 8-Mile Road, 3-8-4-4-9-8 Mile Road to waive the deficiency and lot area requirements to create three new single-family home parcels. And just after some more reconsiderations, more information, I'd like to see if we could put this back up to a vote at the next reading, at the next regular, so that anybody that would like to attend can attend that meeting, Mr. President.
Sounds good. Counsel, any further questions? Audience, any questions on removing that item for the minutes? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilwoman Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Bezinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the motion carries seven to zero. I'm going to jump back with the exception of number 15. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting, the City Council that was held on August 7th. Counsel?
Support.
We've got Toye with the motion, Vice President with the support. Counsel, any further communications? Audience, any communication on the minutes? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Bezinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the minutes carry seven to zero. I'm going to jump into audience communication. The council set aside 30 minutes for items that are currently not on the agenda. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Christopher Martin, and our resident of the great state of Michigan. Want to talk a little bit about free speech, one of my favorite topics over the years. And want to give a little shout out there to Mr. Jolly. When he first took over as council president, he, I feel, helped establish free speech, or reestablish it, whatever term you might want to use. And towards the end of his term as council president, you were taking over, I asked it, hopefully that you would also be in favor of free speech, and you nodded at the time that you were, and for the most part, it has been exactly that way. We've come a long way in the last two and a half years, let's call it. And there was a time, though, and I want to mention this to the people that might be watching out in TV land, is it was the day after an election, and I came in and stood at this very podium and attempted to thank the people that voted for me. And I said, I'd like to thank the people that voted for me, and I was shouted down at that time by people on council, and Laura Toye was council president at the time, and she thought that was just okey-doke to do that.
It was.
And I thought that was the sleaziest thing I'd seen in quite some time. Prior to me coming up here and thanking the people, no one had ever done it before. And it's not that I was able to sit up there, I just want to thank the people that voted for me. And I never forget the 5,060 people that did, and the $1,000 that I paid, never sought endorsements, never made any secret pacts with anybody to get money, okay? That type of stuff, okay? But as far as free speech, back in 2015, and I gave Mr. Carter Fisher over there, and yourself, back in 2015, the governor at the time, Mr. Snyder, made it where it wasn't against the law to swear in front of children and women. It's a law that had been on the books for over 100 years. And I want to know just exactly, since this is, I think, a city-run channel, what we're allowed to say here, and it's not that I want to swear a lot, because that's not my style, I bring that out every, rare occasions I bring that out. I just want to be able to explain how some city employees over the years have treated me and used the same language that they used towards me, and let people know exactly who it was, what they said, and how they acted. So I gave a copy of that to Mr. Fisher. I know other cities have gone ahead and also made it part of their city ordinances or laws or whatever, but we're still in the state of Michigan. How does that necessarily apply to free speech at this podium?
That's time.
That's my question.
That's time. And Mr. Martin, that is, and I'm sure, well, if it's okay?
Maybe Mr.?
Just outside of the record, let me get you a more, you know, formal answer, and we'll get you something to it.
Yeah, and that's actually a state of Michigan law.
I'm sure it is.
So, yeah.
But we're all about that, we like having you here, you get your three minutes and...
Well, it used to be six.
Okay, I'm going to try to negotiate that. I'm glad it's down to three. No, we always love to see you. We always love to see you.
I'm trying to get four.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. And then Mr. Javon Johnson, I was going to, more of a formal introduction, he is our representative from Warren Evans Office, from the County Executive's Office, and we're glad to have him. We just heard that you are our official guy, even though I've always thought that you have been our official guy. I got to tell you, this guy would send out correspondence, his communication skills are by far better than a lot of people. So, thank you, welcome. If you wanted to just give a little bit of a, you know, you get 20 minutes, so feel free.
Thank you, thank you. I won't take up too much of your time. I know you have important business to get to, to the City Council, thank you for a lot, and it's time for me to come visit to the city of Livonia. My name is Javion Johnson. I am the Community Outreach Liaison for the Wayne County Executive, Warren C. Evans. I just wanted to come introduce myself to everyone again, and let you know that I'll be more visible in the community now that we've expanded our team. So we have now, we have Downriver Liaisons, we have liaisons for Gross Point, as well as the east side of Wayne County, and I'll be more focused on the west side. So, look forward to seeing you guys around the city. If there's any way I can help or assist with facilitating any matters that are moving kind of slow, or lacks any communication on, I would love to help you guys out, and of course, you'll see more communications from me as well. I do have one thing from our DPS Department, they did say, any service requests, please make sure you put them in, any service request numbers that you may have, please share them with me so that I can follow up and check on where those issues are and what stage they're in. And feel free to call 888-Road-Crew for any pothole situations or anything regarding intersections where there are large weeds that need to be cut down, anything like that, and just let me know what the service request number is, and I can get back to you on timeline and all those different matters. So, thank you again for this, a lot of time. I look forward to working with each and every one of you, and good luck tonight.
Javion, thank you so much for hanging out, and I know that you have kind of just got more in this role with us. You know, our biggest thing is, is let's establish a partnership.
Yes.
It's funny, you know, just, you know, I've been on council, I think, five years now, and we've had a good partnership, but there's silos everywhere.
Yeah.
And just you being here, and even the emails and the correspondence has been wonderful. So let's continue cultivating that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Counsel, do you have anything?
I'll save my comments for after, so stick around.
My man.
No, thank you very much. Is there any further audience communication for items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none? Oh, if you have one, make your way up to the podium, and you got name and address, and you got three minutes.
Okay.
Take your time, we won't start the clock.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor, as well as City Council. My name is Alicia Strong, and I represent the Wayne County Treasurer's Office. So I am the Executive Outreach for the Wayne County Treasurer's Office.
I like that.
Thank you again, Carrie, for answering my email, I appreciate that. Again, just wanted to remind everyone, we are going into foreclosure proceedings for 2022, and as you all know, Livonia is not high up there on the foreclosure list, but we do have to remind you all that we do exist. And to ask that if you have events that you would like for us to attend, please email myself, and we will be in attendance if it does not conflict with our schedule. We have numerous payment plans, and when I say numerous, we have a lot. Although we have a sheet, there are still some that we can't put on every sheet. Mr. Sabri is working really hard to keep everyone in their homes, and we have now started the new payment plans as well. And last but not least, for any investors in the room, it is now the auction time. The first auction takes place in September, and the second takes place in October. The list is now out, and registration has started. Again, thank you for your time, and I'm Alicia Strong from the Wayne County Treasurer's Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Talking about breaking silos, Don, look how good we're doing, guys. This is great. Councilman Donavick?
Can we do council communication?
Yeah. Any further audience communications? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to council communications. Councilman Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President, appreciate it. Thank you from representatives from Wayne County. I personally know Mr. Johnson, and you've sent me a lot of emails recently, so it's nice that we have a representative from Wayne County's, Wayne County Office, the Executive Office, it means a lot. So thank you for being here, and send our regards to the executive and Mr. Assad as well. I wanted to give a special shout out, a special three-year-old birthday, one of our young families in Livonia, Brandon and Maria, their daughter Juliana, celebrated her third birthday over the weekend. Now, this is just a rumor, Mr. President, but apparently she's a better ice skater than I am at three years old.
That's probably right, and that's okay.
She reminds me when I see her. So Juliana, I know you like to watch City Council on your Mondays and Wednesdays with your family, your grandpa, and your uncle, so I wanted to wish you a very happy third birthday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So not only is it Juliana's birthday, but rumor has it, it's our president's birthday this week, and...
I'm turning 16, so I'm going to be able to drive soon, and...
No arts card yet?
No.
But anyway, happy birthday.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
To Brandon, and we appreciate that. Also, Mr. Johnson, that was 888-Road-Crew, I'm going to dial that right now. There's a couple on 7-Mile that we need taken care of, okay. But be careful, they better be manning those lines, because that's going to probably, now that you put it out there, it's probably going to get blown up a little bit. But we appreciate you coming out, thanks.
Anything else from council?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bezinski?
Just to carry on with Wayne County, I will say that my next coffee hour in September on the 14th at the Civic Center Library at 11:00 is about Wayne County. So County Commissioner Terry Morecki will be there to answer questions, provide a county update. Our guests from tonight are more than welcome to join as well if you'd like. In addition to my coffee hour next month, I'm also hosting a fire safety talk for senior with the Livonia Fire Department. We've invited the Community Risk Reduction Chief from the Bureau of Fire Services to come and talk to, at the Livonia Senior Center, seniors from, on Tuesday, September 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., about how to stay safe in their homes. You know, over this past year, I've had a lot of residents come and talk to me about concerns with fire safety in public buildings, in apartment complexes, or just at their home. Obviously, we've had some incidences of home fires in our neighborhoods over the last year that have been notable, so I wanted to organize this so that folks can come, learn ways to be safe, and ask questions, to hopefully offer some peace of mind and guidance, so please attend.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Seeing none, I've got a couple announcements. We want to wish Judge Kavanaugh a happy birthday on August 29th, and also, we do have a committee meeting for our Senior Citizens Families Environment Committee that's going to take place on September 14th, or September 4th, about transportation issues. With that, if nobody else has anything to say, I'm going to move on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. We do have communication from the Department of Finance dated July 19th, forwarding various financial statements, the city of Livonia, for the month ending in May 31st, 2024. This is a receive and file. With that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Items 1 through 11 on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meetings that took place on August 7th and determined to be non-controversial. Counsel, do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice President and...
Support.
...by Morgan. Counsel, do you have any comments? Audience, do we have any comments on the consent items? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Bezinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the consent agenda passes seven to zero. We're going to move on to unfinished business, starting with item number 12. This is a report out on the Finance and Budget Committee meeting that took place August 12th. The subject matter was the advanced budget review for fiscal year 2425 in a pre-budget meeting. I'm going to hand it over to Councilman Jolly.
Thank you, Mr. President. So on Monday, August 12th, here in City Hall, we met as the Budget and Finance Committee. This is part of a very robust budget processing system here in the city of Livonia. Committee members present for the meeting, where myself is chair, Ms. Tashnik is vice chair, and Mr. Donavick is a committee member. We had other city officials present, Ms. Bezinski, Ms. Toye, Mayor Brosnan, Mr. Fisher, City Attorney, Ms. Lichtenberg, Finance Director, Mr. Dave Varga, Chief of Staff, and Mr. Toramina, Planning and Economic Development Director. So the meeting convened at 7:01, and was led initially by Mayor Brosnan, who introduced the budget timeline. Ms. Lichtenberg, the Finance Director, provided an overview of the budget creation and timeline. She noted that there was a strategic focus placed on advancing operations, service, and transparency in the city of Livonia, as well as advancing Livonia 21. Initial budget projections were provided to the council, noting a 6.5% increase in property taxes, but noting losses in state shared revenue and other revenue sources. Overall, there's a 3.4% or $2.4 million increase in the general fund revenue, for a total of $73.5 million. Points were made that the police and general contracts have been settled, but that healthcare costs for the city were to be determined, and that's reviewed on an annual basis. Also noted was legacy costs are in a good place, as the city has been fiscally responsible in making contributions as appropriate, and when we have the funds to do so, oftentimes over and beyond what the accountants say that we should do. There were five strategic objectives presented. Number one was a DPW focus, to be on the fundamentals of water and sewer, roads, parks, engineering, waste management, forestry, and building maintenance. A move to a priority-based budgeting process for fiscal year 2526, project management services for large-scale construction and renovation projects that we expect to be having here in the next couple of years, a budget and fiscal services manager to provide analytical information needed to implement the budget, excuse me, the priority-based budgeting system, and to provide resources to support proactive, forward-looking city or operations with oversight of large-scale projects. This is the opportunity each year for council to give initial feedback in terms of what council priorities might be for the year ahead, so that those may be considered in creation of the budget. Some of the things addressed by council were the need for a facilities manager, a person to focus on ADA compliance within the city, for there to be a property inventory of city-owned properties throughout the city, not just city-owned buildings, for there to be an investment in Greenmead Historical Park, to explore Livonia Beautification Awards, and to focus on inspection citywide. This is a standing item and will remain in committee. The council recommends that this be received and placed on file for the information of the council, and the city of Livonia 2024 Assessment Data Booklet from the City Assessor be as well, and that's dated June 18th of 2024. The meeting adjourned at 8:13 p.m. Mr. McCullough, this is a preliminary meeting, and there is no votes expected at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. Any communication from council on that item? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Seeing none. We are now going to move on to item number 13, which is readout for the Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting that took place August 12th, 2024, the subject matter of the solid waste slash recycling contract. And this is, Mr. Donavick? The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a fair warning to the residents, this is a lengthy item, and I'm going to try to go into detail, since it is such a significant thing in our community trash. It's something that we deal with every single day as residents. The meeting was August 12th, it convened at 7:30 p.m. Myself as the chairman, our vice chairman, Councilman Jim Jolly, and our committee member, Carrie Bezinski, were present. Also in attendance was our council president, Mr. McCullough, and City Councilman, Mr. Morgan. Other city officials present was our mayor, Mayor Maureen Miller-Brosnan, Chief of Staff, Dave Varga, City Attorney, Carter Fisher, Finance Director, Deborah Lichtenberg, our Director of Public Works, Mr. Don Roroff, Doug Moore, Assistant Director of Public Works, Kristin Hutchins, our Communications Director, and two members from the Greenleaf Commission, Mr. Bearinghouse and Mr. Cullum, and then two representatives from Priority Waste, Mr. Sam Carmagno and Sam Carmagno Jr.
Mr. Chair?
If I may?
Yes.
I was at that meeting, if you'd like to add my name.
I was just testing you, Councilwoman Toye, you were at that meeting.
My memory's not gone, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I was also there.
And...
Actually, I chatted with Ms. Toye at that meeting.
I remember chatting with her.
Yes, to the residents, I was testing them both, actually.
In fact, I sat next to you, Mr. Donavick, but anyway.
I do recall these important details.
It's all good.
Mayor Brosnan started the meeting off, recapping the solid waste and recycling contract, which expires November 30th of this year. The city went out to bid in April of 2024. Four vendors attended the pre-bid meeting. GFL, Waste Management, Priority Waste, and Titan all attended. Only GFL and Priority Waste submitted bids in May, the following month. Waste Management notified the city, they would not submit a bid, and Titan did not bid as well. Important to note that these bids were submitted prior to the private acquisition between GFL and Priority Waste that took place in July, which impacted some 74 communities across Michigan, most of which we saw on the news. Deborah Lichtenberg, our Finance Director, and Don Roroff, our DPW Director, gave a presentation to the City Council on various bid requirements and program scenarios and options, based on approximately 39,900 homes. Three options were given. Option one, to continue a status quo, with traditional trash cans provided by residents and the existing 24-gallon orange recycling containers. GFL's bid was $19.55 per stop, compared to Priority Waste's bid of $17.50 per stop. Option two, no change in the trash contract, but a citywide transition to 64-gallon recycling carts. Same cost, the city would purchase the recycling carts. Option three was both carts for trash and recycling. 40,000 trash carts and 40,000 recycling carts purchased by the city of Livonia for roughly $4 million from budgeted funds, from the refuse fund of roughly $8 million, which is currently in the count. The cost would be $15.50 per stop, $15.50 per stop, for a rough total of $7.4 million a year, up from our current contract of $13.85 per stop, or $6.3 million a year. That is roughly $950,000 of savings in year one, or a $4.7 million savings at year five, or a $7.6 million savings in year eight from the other vendor's bid, compared to Priority Waste. Our current contract is $13.85 per stop or per home, for an actual cost of roughly $6.3 million a year. Under a new contract with Priority Waste, the new per-stop cost would be $17.50 per stop, or roughly $8.4 million a year, up from the roughly $6.3 million a year with our current vendor. There were several reasons why the administration and the waste contractor are recommending the city of Livonia switch to an all carts, as opposed to the traditional trash cans. We discussed the various carts offered, 95-gallon and 64-gallon carts, the various pros and cons, and the real-world industry perspectives from the waste contractor. A representative from Priority Waste, Mr. Sam Carmagno, which is here this evening, gave the city council a lot of great information from their industry standards, why most communities have switched to the carts, and that Livonia being one of the last cities in metro Detroit that have not switched to carts. Mr. Carmagno explained various pros and cons, and answered several questions and concerns from City Council. The administration received three bids from cart suppliers, all of which were similar in cost and warranties. The city of Livonia currently levies a refuse millage, which covers the cost of trash collection, of which half of a mill is currently not being levied on the residents. The administration has indicated it does not intend, it does not intend to levy the half-mill, and the existing fund balance would cover the cost of this proposed contract and transition to carts, so we could use the existing money and pay for the transition to carts without having to go to residents and ask for additional dollars. There was a continued discussion by the committee chair, myself, on the budget, and confirming we can afford to cover the cost without going back to the residents for an increase. There is also some state grants available to purchase the recycling carts, which could help offset the costs and save the city money to purchase those carts. Our Director of Communications, Kristin Hutchins, gave a really great presentation on various marketing and creative ideas and methods to communicate the changes to the residents. Various social media platforms, online engagement, direct mail ideals were discussed, kind of the do's and don'ts, timelines, and other important information before this program is officially rolled out. The proposed trash contract would be carts plus unlimited collection, and this is something big that I think we as a council are going to have to discuss this evening, because it's been brought to my attention that there may be a change there, but I'll save that for the end. So I'm going to get back to that. The administration recommending, recommended awarding a five-year solid waste and recycling contract to Priority Waste for option three, and to switch from traditional trash cans and recycling bins to 95-gallon trash cans and 95-gallon recycling carts to be purchased from the cart supplier Tudor. Councilwoman Laura Toye offered an approving motion to purchase the carts. Vice Chairman of our committee, Mr. Councilman Jim Jolly, offered an approving motion for the new contract. A great PowerPoint presentation was included in the packet, and will be made available to all members of the public via our city website. All these meetings are open to the public, and information is available on our website, so you as residents can see the exact same presentation that we as council got. This item, the subject matter of waste, solid waste and recycling will stay in committee. The meeting adjourned at 9:45. If counsel, if you'll indulge me for a moment, when we were originally given this contract, and when the RFP originally went out, this was proposed to be carts plus unlimited collection, with the exception of specific unique situations like move-outs, evictions, or cleanouts. Those sorts of situations will be handled by residents to not kind of overburden our contractor. Well, it's been made aware to us that apparently the vendor no longer wants to do unlimited collection. I think that is a substantial change. I'm not comfortable with it. As one council member, I hope that we do not vote on their contract tonight. I hope that we hold it off and give their administration more time to discuss with the vendor. From my perspective as a council member, I think it's very important that our residents get unlimited collection. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with switching to carts, it's such a huge change from what we've done for our entire time as a city, and we've always, for as long as I understand, have done unlimited collection. With that being said, to take that away from us in the last, in the last minute, right as we're about to hit the finish line, is not the way we should be starting this contract up with Priority Waste, so I'm actually really disheartened by that they would do that to us right to finish line. I think that's a big deal, I think we really need to discuss it, and if they're not willing to change, then there needs to be some reality set here, and I hope that we can give the residents what they deserve. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Toye?
If I may, to the committee chair, Mr. Donavick, am I correct in that Priority is the only vendor now for garbage? Is that correct?
As of right now.
As of right now?
Yes.
Okay.
As of right now.
Okay. And this change, just lastly?
And we can, Madam, Councilwoman Toye, we can still move the motion forward to approve the carts.
Right.
To get that ball rolling.
Okay.
But we can, through our parliamentary either table item or keep it in committee and not actually vote on going to the carts.
Mr. President and Mr. Chair. At this time, I think this is such a substantial change in operations from what we understood at the time of the meeting. I don't think it would be appropriate to move forward with either at this point in time. Purchasing carts assumes that we will be in the place with a contract that utilizes the carts. We're not at that point yet. I think we need to have further discussions as a council in a committee meeting. I don't believe there's a motion that's necessary to do that, but I'm not prepared to offer my motion that I was prepared to offer at the time of the committee meeting at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Toye.
Thank you. The second part of my question was what? Is the administration obviously is aware of this? Oh, there's somebody. Oh, it's a mayor.
Mayor?
Sorry, mayor.
Are you okay if I go to the mayor?
Thank you. I just wanted to double-check where we're at. Thank you. I'll yield to the mayor.
The floor is yours, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, council. Councilman Donavich, I think that is probably the most comprehensive report I have ever heard come out of a committee on a really difficult subject, one that is extremely important to our community. You know, I think as we talked about at the committee meeting, there is probably not one single change that will be as big as this change that we bring to our community. Not one single change that has the capacity to do as much good for our community as this change does. So I really appreciate that you're taking a step back tonight. Know that this administration stands with you to make sure that we get the very best contract for our residents. As much as this is a surprise to all of you that we are not benefiting from that comprehensive level of service, it comes as a shock to our administration. So when we spoke with you last, we were all under the understanding that it was going to be business as usual, that the biggest change we were going to encumber on behalf of our residents was going to be a change in cart size, and that was going to be big enough. So know that we stand ready to meet once again in committee and to hash this out. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, anything further?
Just real quick. I just want to give a shout-out, though, to the company that preceded this company, and I know that several of the people that are involved in Priority now also, and we're fortunate that they live in Livonia, have also been part of that. And if many of you weren't here, but when we had that flood, I don't know, I don't think they got anything extra for that as well. And that was a mess in this community in a lot of different areas. So while I concur with everyone on the council, I think that will be voting or doesn't need a vote, but would concur in our administration, I just wanted to recognize them for the goodwill they did on that, on that as well, and some of those same players are involved in this. And I think you need to remember that as we go through these exercises. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I'm reading the room correctly, we're going to just take no further action as of right now and leave it in committee.
Yep.
Is that fine, council?
Yep.
I'm going to open up to the audience. If the audience had any questions, concerns, comments on this, I'm seeing none, then that item will remain in committee and we'll revisit it sooner than later. With that, we're going to move on to item number fourteen is a committee of the whole meeting that was conducted on August nineteenth. The subject matter of petition two zero two-three dash zero-six dash zero-two dash zero-seven, submitted by Seven Mile slash Farmington Venture LP requesting special waiver use approval to develop a planned general development consisting of a seventy-five thousand four hundred and sixty-six square-foot Meyer grocery store and a hundred and two multifamily residential townhome complex at the property of three-three-five-zero-zero West Seven Mile Road. I'll do a quick readout. My notes are definitely not as thorough as Mr. Donavich's, but we've been talking about this item. The committee meeting took place, again, that was on August nineteenth. The committee meeting commenced at seven oh-two. I introduced the item, jumped it right over to our Economic Development Director and Planner, Mark Turmina. He gave a quick overview before we handed it over to the developer to kind of go over some of the new data that was discussed. Council members heard from representatives from Showstack and Meyer regarding updated landscaping and signage details. Council members had concerns about the look and the main signage, along with other landscaping and lighting. We had a total of five residents speak over the course of the meeting. An approving resolution was offered by Councilman Scott Morgan to include the following: trash cans in walkable areas, a proxy cart-controlled device, a stationary art allowance, and the additional shade trees in some of the landscaping plans. The committee meeting was adjourned at eight thirty, and right now, obviously with the motion, I'm going to hand it back over to council. That was kind of the quick overview of the meeting. Councilman Morgan?
Yes, Mr. President and council. After a long, exhausted discussion...
We just need a motion first, and then I'll get to...
Oh, a motion to approve.
Support.
So you've got a motion, support from Donavich. The floor is back, yours, Councilman Morgan?
Yes, my apologies. Okay. You know, we have had several discussions regarding this project. This project has been dilapidated and for quite some time now. We've worked over this proposal with the builder, with the Meyers. We went over it. We've made multiple changes. For the most part, the builder and Meyers has complied with us as far as beautification of that property, making sure that we have a good amount of setback. We have a good amount of parking. We have flowers and trees, and it'll be a very nice area. I know there, we've received several emails, phone calls. I responded to as many as I possibly could, but in, in the gist of it, it, most people are in favor of this, redevelopment of this property. I know there are some people out there that don't like the size of the atrium or they don't like the size of the Meyer sign. There's little, small details that the builder is, that's their brand. We are not going to be able to fix that. They are in compliance with all our city ordinances, and I am going to be in favor of this. I think I'm looking forward to this. It's going to be a great project. You know, we put up, they've offered to put up trees in the back of the lot and try and do some sound deadening for the residents around there. I mean, we've, at exhaustive effort, we've done everything we possibly can as council members to make this an amazing project, and it's going to really be good for the area. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Vice President, then I'll go to Councilwoman Toye, then the Councilman Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually just wanted to thank especially Meyer, but Showstack as well, for their compromise on a lot of these items. And I know that I personally beat Meyer up pretty well at the last meeting. And in the spirit of compromise, I think we've come to a good project here. I really appreciate what we've done with the signs, the carts, the landscaping, and I just want to just let you know that I am excited about this development. I think it's going to be much better than what's there, and, you know, I'm ready to move on with it. I had one just tiny, small ask.
Yeah.
A resident contacted me about putting cart corrals nearer to the handicap parking spots. They said that oftentimes when they go to the markets, not just Meyer, but any market, there are never cart corrals by the handicap spots, and they feel bad leaving their carts, but they can't walk all the way down to where those are. So if you could just consider that in the plans, that would be, that would be my one last little ask. But I, like I said, welcome to the community, and I will be in support as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toye.
Thank you very much. I, I've struggled over this because I've never had as many phone calls that, if any of you remember, the dove vote the legislature took some time back, where we chose to either shoot doves, mourning doves, that is, or not.
What did you choose?
And it was, it was, it was quite a controversial issue, and there was a lot, a lot of discussion in late nights on that one. My concern is this. As we look at this community, and as I've lived here for many, many years, I've seen Seven Mile Farmington erode terribly. I own a business here in Livonia on Plymouth Road, and I'll tell you something. If I had put wood, plywood, in my windows, if I had not fixed my parking lot, if I had let weeds grow over and over for many years, I'd be happy we're going to do something too. So it's like, a lot of attitudes are, anything is better than nothing. And there's nothing against Meyers. Meyers is a great corporation, and what the Showstack brothers, et cetera, are trying to do is do this community right. But the problem is, they didn't keep up their property to begin with. I mean, and that, to me, really, I struggle with that because I don't want other businesses seeing that and then being rewarded in the end with a nice zone and, you know, a seven-zero vote, which sends a message. And, you know, I just wonder, also, if anybody is here from Meyers, I'd like to ask them about their SDM license, if that's very much needed, because you have a lot of businesses in that area that are going to be affected by this Meyer store. Okay? And you know what an SDM license is? Is a packaged liquor license, or thereabout beer and wine. Is there anybody maybe tonight here that can represent them by any chance?
Councilwoman Toye, just a matter of clarification.
Sure.
We do have that items on our study.
Right. Right, I know we do. But I just want to ask them as I'm taking this vote.
I think we do have some members from Meyer. Is there anybody that would like to take the communication? Name and address for the record.
Good evening, council. Thank you for some positive comments on our project. I think it's gotten tremendously better over the course of the last couple of years, and a lot of that has to do with your input and planning council's input, Mark Turmina and his staff's inputs. We've listened to a lot of resident comments, excuse me, and we've tried to incorporate as many of them as possible. As far as the SDM, it's a critical component of a grocery store. When you, when you think about kind of leveling the field of looking at our competitors and you look at Kroger, Whole Foods, Walmart, Target, you know, the list goes on, Bush's, Fresh Time, they're all going to sell beer and wine. And that's a part of, you know, a lot of people's shopping as they go to the grocery store. Even though it's, the revenue of it is relatively small, it's an important, it's an important component to a shopping experience. And I think, I think we'd be at a very unfair competitive advantage to not offer those, those products. I, I think when you listen to our presentation tonight at study session, you'll hear that, you know, the reason we're before the committee this evening is because we keep sliding our building forward and to provide distance and greater buffering from the residents that join us to the rear. If we'd have left our building at the, at the point where we started, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't need a, you know, we'd be, you know, I think we're four hundred and some feet away. There's four or five different businesses that are within the five hundred feet limitation. But if we'd have stayed back, we'd have been over five hundred feet. So it's one of those catch-twenty-twos where you're trying to, trying to satisfy as many people as possible. Then when we look at the businesses that exist on Seven Mile, you know, you have four or five businesses right in a row that are all within five hundred feet of each other. There's, some of them are less than, you know, two hundred feet between each other. And they all do a little bit different niche in their sale of beer and wine. Of course, Winter Garden has a tavern, and then you've got a pizzeria, and you've got a wine shop. So they're all a little bit different. Ours is strictly, you know, strictly for off-premises consumption. I think it is a critically component. I got asked this at one study session. Is there a Meyer store in our two hundred and seventy-two store, six-state footprint that doesn't sell beer and wine? And the answer is no. I think, I think even Livonia, you know, we don't sell liquor at our store, which is a pretty, a pretty stable product that's sold in most, you know, states and most cities. But here, it's, you know, you have, the city council has a waiver for, for under five hundred feet. It's a critical component, and I would appreciate your support on it. And we'll talk about more, more on some slides we have tonight at eight o'clock. Thank you.
I appreciate some of the explanation as well. If some of the council recalls, when Cosmo came in and wanted a liquor license, we, we didn't let them sell in Livonia because we had a lot of party stores here that, mompa party stores, actually, that sold a lot and depended on those resources and that revenue. So don't be disillusioned that, you know, some of the businesses he's mentioning, you left out Joe's Market, also has contributed to this community over and over again, whether it be Little League teams, Girl Scouts, whatever. And they've been here a long time. Joe's has been here for seventy-five some years. I can remember, my dad was a police officer, and we sat out when it was just a little farm kind of thing with little tables with little corn and peaches and stuff over there. So I, I want to be fair to our community as we look at these things, as we move forward, you know, both in the appearance of what has been really terrible. I mean, seriously, as far as that corner has looked terrible. I agree with everyone. I'm not trying to rip on Meyers in any way. They've been a good community. We have two of them, I think, right here in Livonia, if I'm not mistaken. They're a little different than what you're proposing, I get it. But that's why I wondered if you could live without an SDM license so that some of our other businesses that have been here a long time can continue to flourish in their independent way. That's all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm going to go to Councilman Donavich, then Councilman Jolly.
Thank you to all the residents that have spent a lot of time sending me emails, phone calls, messages. Like Mr. Morgan mentioned, I try my best to respond to them all. But it's not easy. They get lost in your email box. You miss phone calls. You try calling people back. You send an email, it's a spam box. So just know that I do read them all, and I do appreciate it. There's been a lot of good back and forth. And I think this plan is the highest and best use, the best plan we're going to see because of the residents and because of so much detail-oriented question amongst the city council. We asked a lot of questions. We made a ton of changes. This has been going on for a year and a half as this project specifically, but it's been going on for decades. And I agree with my esteemed colleague, Laura Toye. This corner is horrendous. I drive by it every single day, and I'm tired of it. But we finally have an opportunity to invest north of sixty million dollars into this corner. One of the corners that we as a city council voted on, we all talked about it during election time, to approve Livonia Vision Twenty-One. Well, now we have a chance. We have a chance to invest sixty million dollars into a corner and provide something for the residents, provide something for future families, provide something for our community to solve an eyesore. And that's what it currently is, an eyesore. So I, too, am frustrated. I shared the sentiments of my colleagues on that, and that's why I want to do something. If we don't do anything, it's going to continue to kick the can down the road If we don't do anything, it's going to continue to kick the can down the road for another 10 years, and it's only going to get worse. The facts are, they're not going to invest money in this if we deny it. They're not going to. We're all adults. We understand how business works. It's just going to sit there if they don't sue us. And it's going to get worse and worse and worse. And I, in good conscience, can't do that. Some of the facts about this item, it is 16 and a half acres, 16.5 acres. Currently, the existing buildings that have been there since the '70s or '80s, I believe, is roughly 150,000 square feet of existing buildings right now. We're going to go from 150,000 square feet of building to a 75,000-square-foot Meyer and a few of those townhome buildings. So 150,000 to 75,000. Impervious area. Right now, 91% of the site is covered in asphalt or some sort of impervious surface. That is going to go down to 76%. So 91% down to 76%. In addition to that, when they built this building back in those old days, they didn't have the same sewer requirements and building requirements. So not only are they going to knock down an old building that's probably full of asbestos and all sorts of environmentally harmful things, they're knocking it down, building a brand-new building, and they're adding underground detention system that currently is not there. So all that water on 91% of asphalt and man-made products is going to our sewer system. Now, it's not going to do that as fast. It's going to go into an underground detention system, which today's building requirements require of our developers. Currently, there are 820 parking spots, 820 parking spots of asphalt. That's going to go down to 282 parking spots, plus 126 parking spots for the townhomes. So I can go on and on and on about the improvements of the site visually. I can go on and on about the improvements to the site factually. I can go on and on about why I'm not excited about a Meyer. I'm not excited about a Meyer. We've got a ton of grocery stores. But the facts are, the developers have a constitutionally protected right to develop their site within our ordinances and our regulations. Just because I don't necessarily like a Meyer doesn't mean I can vote that way. I could vote that way, but I would not be doing my job. My job is to follow the law and vote and make sure that we get the best possible plan out of the developer. This project was further north, closer to the residents. They moved it south, actually to their detriment, which is why they have to come back before city council for an SDM license. They moved it further south at the behest of our council, asking them to move it away from the residents. They did that, and now they got to come back to us. We made them do that. They're adding sound walls. They're adding vegetation, trees. Something that I'm really passionate about is the shopping cart corrals and the control devices, so that the shopping carts don't end up abandoned a mile down the road. They're adding that, so now the shopping carts will be controlled and on their property itself. The improvements to landscaping and the improvements to walkability, the list goes on. Good quality materials, we're building 100 townhomes in our community. That's new families, new residents coming here. You know, it's a plus-plus-plus, and I'm supportive of it. And I think that it'll be a really great welcome thing to that corner. I can only imagine looking at that corner three, four years down the line when it's all finished and what it looks like now, which would be a vast improvement. And I'd like to note that they do close at 12:00, which, sure, maybe I wish it was earlier, but other stores close at 12:00. Some grocery stores are actually 24 hours. So I think that that is in keeping or consistent with some of our other stores. And then also, they're not selling liquor. I would not be supportive if they were selling liquor. We don't allow any of our big-box grocery stores to sell liquor. But to say that they can't serve beer and wine, which we'll get into our study session, I think that'd put us in a bad spot, actually, legally. So for all those reasons, I'll be in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Donavich. Councilman Jolly.
Thank you, Mr. President. So there's a lot to unpack here. Mr. Donavich just did a great job in recapping the progress that we've made to this point. I originally ran for city council in 2015, and this was the most pointed question during that campaign season. What the plans of the person running would be to support on Seven and Farmington, the corner. This has been an underlying current in regards to what was going to happen to this property for the last nine years that I've served on city council. There has been significant progress to mark where we are now from where we were just a year ago in regards to what the developer and Meyer were proposing for this particular site. But there were other plans that were floated to the city council and to the city administration through rapid-response meetings that were not even to the point of being palpable to bring to the council for proper consideration, to be honest with you. These rapid-response meetings are meetings that meet all the qualifications of Michigan's Open Meeting Act, do not have a quorum of council members' presence, but there's people from the zoning board of appeals, the administration, the planning commission, and the city council who give a first pass to proposals on different development. And we had some of those come through that were not worth their muster, and we did not move forward with them. But in regards to this site here in particular, I want to be hopeful that we are turning the page in regards to the blight at that corner. That's my intention. That's the intention of the council, the developer, the administration. We are nothing short but lucky and blessed that the blight at that corner did not go outward in all directions. The fact that Livonia has been a stable community, that all those small surrounding businesses have held their own with this site in the state that it was, that will not continue forever. This is not a perfect plan. I don't think a perfect plan exists. After doing this and listening to plans for the last nine years, there's nothing that is perfect. But this is progress towards stabilizing that corner in our community in a place that has been desperately needed. I will be supporting this. I think it is, cannot understate the progress that we've made in regards to what we wanted, what the developer wanted. But they have met the vast, vast majority of the questions and the asks that we have presented them with answers that were very reasonable, and I thank them for that. I'm looking forward to us turning the pages of community, not about what's going on at this site, but what is next to add value to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. Anybody else from council? Councilwoman Buzinski.
Yeah, I'll just concur with my colleagues and say that I really, you know, no project is perfect, but I do think this will be a positive catalyst for Livonia. For those of us who've lived here for a long time, we've become accustomed to seeing the vacant Kmart at Seven and Farmington. It's something we just kind of drive by and like, oh, gosh, it's still there. But, and you know, we've internalized it, we accept it, sorry about my voice. But when we have, you know, prospective residents coming to look at a house in one of those neighboring subdivisions, or an entrepreneur looking to do business here, they're seeing that, and it's raising questions in their mind about why is there this vacant space? What is that a sign of? What am I missing? Why is it vacant so long? You know, we have relatives who just kind of come, you know, maybe a couple of times a year for the holidays, and they see this vacant building every single time. What's up with that? We need to consider the fact that the impact of these vacant sites are larger-reaching than what we can even appreciate, because it's deterring people that we're not able to welcome into our community. I believe that not only will this literally welcome in new families and individuals with the housing component, but that having a new grocery store with hopefully beautiful, well-maintained green space and public art will attract new people, new businesses, and also be a value add to the residents who've, you know, kind of endured this blighted site for so many years. So, you know, again, nothing is perfect, but I think we put in a lot of time and effort, and by we, I mean this council, the previous council, the administration, to make sure that it's something that will bring value that our residents can appreciate once it's completed. And so I will be in support of it as well.
Thank you. Anything further from council? I'm going to go to the audience right now. If anybody would like to have audience communications, please make your way to the podium. And you would name an address, and you got two minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Marsha McLean, 20075 Hedgewood Avenue. First of all, I'd like to give a shout-out to a gentleman that came, actually came from his home during a planning commission meeting. When Meyer was telling, or giving us all the particulars on, we're going to use this material and that material, he got so upset that he came to the meeting and said, "That isn't good material to use," and gave all the reasons why. And the planning commission, they're writing down all the specifics, and I think they came up with like 20 things that needed to be done, which I guess they did do them. So I give a shout-out to that gentleman. I don't know who he is, but hooray for you. Mr. Donavich, I disagree with you about the businesses or the food retail in North Livonia. All of them close at 10:00 PM. And so having a Meyer to stay open to 12:00 is not really what the residents that I've talked to really want. And I thought maybe that'd be one thing, the council would go, "Hey, Meyer, close at 10:00," like Kroger, Bush's. And I guess that was my only thing that, I know it's an eyesore, and we have to put something there, but I was hoping that maybe closing at 10:00 would be something that the area residents would kind of like.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Christopher Martin, a great state of Michigan. I couldn't let this one go by.
No, you had, no, I had, now it's two minutes. You had two minutes. You get two. Mr. Martin, your clock has not started yet.
Oh, okay.
I'll give you an extra four and a half seconds.
Let's start the clock. Okay. I'm in favor of this. And I witnessed, again, this evening, one of the great political performances of our lifetime here. I just want people to know out in TV land that it was a committee of the whole meeting recently, and everyone was there except one person, and that was Laura Toy. So would have been nice, maybe she had something else, like another commitment that evening, who knows? But there's a camera, and so she wanted to take the stage and talk about the Meyer store. I'm in favor of this. I think the term is, I believe we can show seven, I think is the term. I think the, one thing that I took away from the committee of the whole meeting, Mr. Morgan, when you ask Martha, "What specifically do you want as far as changes?" Can you be very specific on what you want? She just couldn't do that. I thought that was a very good question, because we talked about colors and the sizes of the atrium and all kinds of stuff, okay? It's a $16 million investment, yeah? I'm in favor of it. The only thing I think they're going to have a problem with at some point is that facility that's going to be close to the townhouses over there, where people are going to be having picnics and family affairs and stuff like that, people are going to think that they're going to reserve that, okay? So I think there's going to be arguments over that area over there, okay? I would not put trees up around it. I would have put a canopy over it, like a carport-type thing, keep the sun off of it, keep the snow off of it, and that type of stuff. So anyway, I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any more audience communication? Good evening, sir.
Hi. Bob Clancy, 17786 Country Club. So that store was the last building standing after I left Detroit to go to Schoolcraft College in '68. There was nothing after that. There was no 275. There was no 96. There was nothing except Schoolcraft and that hospital, which is now torn down. So officially, Schoolcraft is the oldest thing. Where Myers is right now on Hagerty, that used to be a gravel pit. We used to swim in that thing. But I'm very proud at Myers, over the years, and we shopped there many times after we came back from Minnesota in 1984. We were there for four years. That store has updated itself many times. The facade, the inside, the flooring, the lighting, everything about them, good corporate people. And when I came back from Minnesota, the year later, Target came. And that was the demise, the final demise of Kmart. And that, along with Coles and Menards, as a matter of fact, came from Minnesota. So those companies know how to, you know, fix it up, keep it current, give the customers what they want. That Kmart over there on Seven Mile was nothing but a dungeon. I hated to go in there. Whatever sale they had, I couldn't get, I couldn't get out of there fast enough. The racks were terrible, the lighting was terrible, the floor is disgusting, the doors coming in and out of it, it was just a mess. It was never kept up. But you have nothing to worry about with Myers, nothing to worry about with the Target. They're going to do just fine. They're going to keep it fresh, current. People are going to get what they want, and they're going to do a great job. They're good corporate citizens. So I think you have nothing to worry about. As far as competition, I still go to Joe's. I buy my meat from Joe. I'm always going to buy my meats from Joe. I don't like packaged stuff. I want to see the butcher. I want my stuff trimmed. So.
That's time, sir.
There's space for everybody.
But I appreciate the comments. Any further audience communication? Seeing none, I'm going to pass the gavel really quick to, because it's the fun part that I get to talk. May I have a floor?
You have the floor.
All right. So I just want to thank everybody that has been part of this project. I know we have some of our planning commissioners also in the audience. We have the developers. One thing that I've learned, you know, I never dreamed that I would jump into politics, especially city politics. I was worried about playing hockey and doing some other crazy stuff. But I could tell you this, my mom grew up, she was a Stevenson grad, she worked at Ponderosa right in that parking lot. She worked for Kmart. And I still remember, I think it was probably seven years ago, we went in there and everybody, you know, talking about the dilapidation of the store, seeing all the hoses and everything catching water, going into garbage cans throughout the entire place. And, you know, just like Councilman Jolly said, 2015, I jumped in in 2019, and it was, what are you going to do with Seven and Farmington? And I could tell you that, yeah, I mean, change is always going to be scary, but everybody can, you know, I, at least for me, I look at it, that building, you know, you look at Google Maps, it's been sitting like that forever. And every time, I think all of us go by it, we cringe. To see something, I think this plan's good, and honestly, we did. I commend council, because I think we held the developers and architects and engineers, we had a good working relationship, but we held their feet to the fire and ensured that, you know, while they're developers and doing business in the city, that we had the backs of the residents. And I think that's a plan that you see. Certain things that have been listed as extra items is, you know, I want to highlight them. Councilman Donavich and other members of council, you know, cart proxy. Anybody that doesn't know what that is, is basically, these carts are going to have like GPS on them. So if they hit some kind of the property line, it's going to lock up the wheels. So we're not going to have that problem that we currently have on Plymouth Road, which we are also working on. We also have, you know, I remember sitting down, looking and saying, hey, I'd like to have some more walkability. And honestly, if you see some of these areas and renderings, they're beautiful. I mean, the plants and flowers, and we also told, hey, what's the maintenance plan on it? We've got light shields, we've got lighting controls that can dim the luminosity after a certain point. You have sprinklers. You have a developed corner. And outside of that, too, you have the other corner that has Scooter's Coffee, that the permits have been pulled. So, I mean, you look at, you look at that corner right now, we've had two dilapidated corners, and you've had businesses, in some theory, screaming for types of development like this. The gentleman brought up, "I'm going to go buy my filets and my New York strips and everything from Joe's." They've got, you know, great seafood. I think that they're going to succeed. I think Primos is going to love this. I think that the liquor store across the street is going to do very well, because it's putting 100 units right there. And so these are going to be people in the area that are not only going to be paying taxes and shopping and being stewards of the community, they're going to be part of our fabric. So again, you know, like I said, is every plan perfect? Probably not, but I think this is about as good as it's going to get. And right now, with the volatile, the volatility of the market and the politics and world, I mean, things could change in a day. And I just am getting sick of looking at that corner, and I really do think this is going to be a very tasteful plan. It's a Meyer grocery store, and I know we brought up some of the things with the atrium. It's a very tasteful plan. And I'm happy that we finally came to something, and before we go to the vote. And it's been a long time coming. It really has. So, I mean, this is a big deal for the city going forward, and I think this is going to spur that whole, that whole corner all the way down to Joe's. And all the little buildings that are in between, I think, will obviously have some development aspects into it. So for that reason, I will be supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Ms. Toy.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I concur with many that have said what they've said. My concern was and is that we've allowed that particular corner to go untidy, if you will, at best. And that concerned me. And that still concerns me, that we don't, we've got to keep up on that kind of thing in our city. Otherwise, you are going to get properties that look like that and remain like that for a long time. And there's only so much we can do. I understand that. But I also understand that's up to the property owner to take good responsibility. I keep up my building, and I would not want my building to look like that, because it would affect my business. And my customers would have something to say about that. It's not that I'm against Meyer by any means. In fact, I shop there. But I, and I've also looked at their store out in, by, what is it, Beaumont Hospital there. Lovely store. Very lovely. And we're fortunate to have something like that be brought to us at this time, as you've said, council president. I agree with you 100%. But I just was concerned about those kind of factors, as well as, that's why I wanted to see if they would go without an SDM license, just to help out some of those other businesses possibly, that do rely on nickels and dimes in this day and age. It's down to that, you guys. There's a lot of businesses that have gone out because they can't afford to stay in, and the rents are high in many cases. I happen to own my own real estate, but a lot of them don't. And when you talk to some of those businesses, they'll tell you, "We operate on a very slim margin," as does Myers, and a lot of their products. So, you know, you're sensitive to that kind of thing. And I wanted to bring up some of those points, not to have camera time, not to, I'm past that kind of stuff, trust me. It's, that days, those days are gone, and that's fine. It's up to all of you as you serve out your terms in now and in the future, and you'll do a wonderful job. I know you will. But I'm just, I wanted to bring up some of that, so that maybe it just opened a a few, you know, minds to, okay, as we portray this in the future, what's it going to look like? Not only that site, but other sites that we may have problems with in the future. So I just wanted to clarify my position on that and not mislead anyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Bozinski.
Yes, so we had a resident ask a question about the hours for the store, and since you've come to so many of our meetings, I wanted to take a public opportunity to speak from the dais opposed during in-between time, and just say that personally, I think being open till midnight is nice, I'm spoiled, I live by Larry's, they're open 24 hours a day, and especially with young kids, I mean, you need medicine, you need milk, sometimes you just need a place to go, and, you know, or life is busy and you're grocery shopping at 10 o'clock at night. It has happened to me, I went to Kroger once at 9:45, and they were, the doors were locked, and I was very confused and surprised, which is why I almost always shop at Larry's, but just to say, I do think that there are other, there are residents who, you know, for various reasons, you're working the night shift, and, you know, or flexible hours or what have you. So, I think it is actually a value add, because as you noted, there's no other alternatives really up there other than the CVS at Newburgh and Five Mile. So, I just wanted to publicly share my opinion, because I know you've been here.
Mr. Donavich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Before we go for a vote, I just wanted to acknowledge procedurally, there were so many changes to this, so to the maker of the motion and to Mr. Tormina, I guess, can we just make sure that every, all these changes are sort of reflected, and can you work with the developer to make sure all those changes are reflected in the resolution and language?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina, thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? All right, we have a motion ready to be voted on, so, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote? Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
The vote passes seven, nothing. And at this time, I will pass the gavel back to President McCullough.
Thank you. All right. All right, with that, we are now going to move on to unfinished, more unfinished business, item number 15. It is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, this comes to us from the Housing Commission and Planning Department to amend Chapter 3.12 Senior Citizens' Housing Tax Exemption.
Mr. President, I will offer a first read at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? All right, we got a first read, I'm going to move...
You got a comment?
Oh, comment's yours. Good call.
Yeah, just, Christopher Martin, just a quick question here, was this, was this related earlier this year to the gentleman that stood over there, was a veteran, and was forced to move out of the complex over there, only to find out later on that...
I do not think that that was, I think this was...
That wasn't related to this?
No.
Okay, because he had to claim that they were, his income was too high to have lived there, and so they forced him to move, and he claimed that they had made an error in the Livonia Housing Commission, so this is unrelated?
Yeah, this is more of a housekeeping update to an ordinance. I can get some more confirmation for you on it, too.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Anything else from the audience? All right, we have first read. We're going to jump into new business. Item number 16 is a ward of bid, this comes to us from the Division of Police for the construction of a scenario training structure to enhance training at the Livonia Glendale Training Center from budgeted funds. Chief, how are you?
I'm good, President McCullough, how are you?
We're doing good.
Happy birthday.
Hey, thanks.
Good evening, council members. I'm excited about this project coming to fruition. As you know, the police department puts a lot of effort into prioritizing training for our officers, so the more training we do, the better decisions we make on the road, and this is an excellent opportunity. This project's been in the making for several years, I'm excited about it. It's a new scenario-based training structure, which is going to be down at our Glendale Training Center. It's going to be able to accommodate so many different scenario trainings, from domestic issues to mental health crisis, to active shooters, and all the other things you can think of when it comes to actual, as close you can get to reality training as you can. So very excited about that. We're also going to be requesting reimbursement grant from our insurance provider, MMRMA, as we always should, I think they'll be excited about that. So, to nuts and bolts, put the project out through the Percy Manager for the Finance Department, sealed bid process, we received five bids, two were from Livonia-based companies, and we would ask that you would accept the lowest bidder, which I'm happy to say is Bonjero Construction, which as you know is family-owned and operated in Livonia, and not too far, probably a stone's throw, from our training center, so I'm very happy about that. It'll be paid for through adjudicated forfeiture funds, so no cost to our taxpayers. And I would like to say Mr. Bonjero is here tonight, maybe to say a few comments, or even ask him, answer some questions from you, and with that, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, do I have a motion? Mr. Donavich?
Mr. President, I will offer an approving.
Second.
Mr. President, I've got a few questions.
Go for it.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, for being here this evening, thank you to Mr. Bonjero for being here. I, too, am excited to see a Livonia-based company is getting this contract, there was five bidders, it's nice to see that this was fiscally responsible, $196,000 to build this home, I think, I mean, it's, I've spoken to your union president and the importance to the training out there on the range, to make sure our officers can handle any kind of issues, so I think this is good, I think this continues to kind of push forward that narrative that Livonia is one of the best trained agencies in the state of Michigan, and I'm excited for that. What kind of training, not to get too deep into it, just to kind of give us a general idea, I mean, guys are going in there, learning how to tactically move through rooms and dark spaces and those sorts of things, right?
Great questions, thank you, Councilmember Donavich, and I thank you for mentioning Anthony Hall, he's also our range master, and he put the yeoman's work into this project, so Anthony's here today, thank you, Anthony, he can answer any specifics to training, but I will say this, the training we're going to do is realistic training, scenario training, we'll use simulations in the structure, we'll use mental health crisis, we'll bring in our social worker Jonathan Reed, to really do some realistic training on so many issues that are affecting us today that will make our officers even better at what they do now, which is making the right decisions at every event. So with that, if you have any more questions?
Councilman Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, Livonia's always been at the forefront of investing in such facilities for training purposes to make sure that everyone is trained and has appropriate responses. The current existing facilities, I know you open those up to surrounding law enforcement agencies as well, and I presume you would do the same with this, correct?
Absolutely, and thank you for bringing that out, Councilman Jolly. We open our training center, which has many ranges, it's got rappelling tower to federal, state, and local agencies, and they compensate us for the use of it, and it's just a great regional training center, and we're proud to homebase it here, and it just makes all those bonds even better. As you know, we have many regional teams with our special operations team, with our mobile field force team, and it's just great synergy, and absolutely, there'll be, all those agencies will be partaking in a new structure.
And the only thing I'll add to that is I think having an open door to those other agencies provides us and our residents with even a better service when we need to call upon them if and when that ever happens.
100%.
Right. So, thank you, Chief, it's a great proposal, and thank you for taking the lead, Mr. Hall.
Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Before I go, I just wanted to say, kudos, I mean, this is, this is innovative way, you know, I'm, being a facilities manager, you learn and dabble with the Milo and all that kind of stuff, this takes it to another level, and it's one of the foundations of public safety in our community, and this is just the innovation going forward, so kudos to both of you guys, and get this thing built, hopefully, we'll find out after this vote.
Thank you, President McCullough.
Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the item carries seven to zero. We move on to item number 17, is a request to schedule a finance and budget committee meeting and to establish a public hearing date. This comes to us from the Department of Finance for the annual budget for the fiscal year ending November 30th, 2025, council.
Move to approve.
Support.
Approval, support. Good evening. Tell us a little bit about how fun this is going to be.
Well, we always look forward to talking budget, it's almost as much fun as talking audit. This is requesting the next meeting to be established, where we do do the deep dive into the proposed budget, which would be held on Monday, September 16th, as a committee meeting for the Finance and Budget Committee. And we do have to establish a date for the public hearing. That proposed date would be Wednesday, October 2nd, that will allow us to properly post that meeting and go through the requirements for us to be able to formally adopt the budget.
Sounds good, thank you. Well, we do have an approving for those dates that are currently in the packet. Counsel, is there any questions or concerns? Audience, questions and concerns on that? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the item carries seven to zero. We're going to move on to item number 18, which is a request to schedule a closed committee of the whole meetings, comes to us from the Department of Law, for the purpose to discussing pending litigation and attorney-client privileged communication with respect to the Sullivan versus City Livonia. Counsel?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions, concerns, comments? Audience, questions, concern, comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?